DM, today is Tuesday, March 7th, 2023. This is the Bluff Town Council meeting. Roll call.
Linda Sosa.
Lou Anhook.
Brent Murray.
Ann Lepinam.
Erin Nelson, serving as town manager.
And Jim Sayers has an excused absence. The first order of business is approval of the Bluff Town Council regular meeting minutes of February 21st, 2023. Has everyone received them? Did you read them and are there any corrections or changes?
They look good to me, Mayor. And I'll make a motion to approve this presented unless anybody has anything.
You don't have a second.
Any discussion? Then all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Four ayes. Then we're down to public comment. There will be a three-minute time limit for each person wishing to comment. If you exceed that three-minute time limit, without permission, the meeting controller will mute you. And so usually that's Jim. I will ask Erin to help with that. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment? And if so, let us know by either signaling us, raising your hand. All right. If I don't see any hands go up in the next minute, I will close off public comment. All right, what I'm going to do now is because we were going to open the bids for the Community Development Black Grant and read the bids into the record, I'm going to move over into the manager's office. So give me one second. I'm going to turn this over to Erin.
Right. So we had placed an RQ for professional services for the Bluff Community Center renovation and ADA improvements project. That went out to bid. So we have two sealed bids with us in the office today. The deadline to receive those was March 1st at 5:00 PM. Both of these were received before that deadline. And they're being opened in the order in which they were received. All right, the first one. Just make sure I've got pieces. And to state for the record, our intention today is just open them and read the total bid amount. After that, I will go through with the selection committee to identify complete, if they are complete applications and do the full bid tabulation. Sorry, I'm just trying to admit everyone into the meeting here. Okay. So the first bid we received is from Epic Engineering. And their bid. Let's see here.
This is kind of like the Oscars.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I'm going to ask you to read this and tell me if you see a total amount on that, please. Thanks for your patience, folks.
And it's the detail-oriented ones. And they are out of Hoover City, Utah. It's an engineering firm. They list their project experience. They worked at Bluff Drawings Resort and at the Hideout, among other things. It's interesting that both the balance sheet and income statement are blank. There are totals at the bottom, which they have. Knowledge and professional qualifications. Resume from the principal. A resume from the structural engineer. The staff assigned to the project. And that is it. A drawing of the boardroom. It does not look to me like we have any breakdown of costs in the service.
All right. So the second packet received.
Can you hear the letter opener?
Really do. No, I'll do this. Can you sign that? Okay, so since they did not provide an estimate, I am opening the second bid that was received. Yes, I joked in our bid opening last week that I needed the letter opener. This package is from Jones and DeMille Engineering. Professional qualifications, apparently. I swear for God. They don't have an estimate on this one either. All righty, so with that, since there are no estimates included, our next steps are we are going to reach out to CDVG, our contacts, and ask them what our next steps should be. Seeing as we received two packages, but no, no cost estimates on the cost of professional services, which we do need to move forward in this project. So I'm not quite sure.
It's like, yes. We stay tuned, everyone. So with that being said, what? Let me initial the first one, or the first page of the. So we have binders and Jones and DeMille sent four binders over the same thing. So I'm just initiating one of the binders. And then the next thing will be number two, the report on the bid process for the work at the Bluff Airport and the next step in the process. I'm going to stay in here until we get through that and then I'll move back into the other office. And there was some communications between J- UDOT and JAviation about an increase in the estimates. All three came in. Actually, I can remove it to the other room so we don't have the echo. And then Erin, if you can. So there were three bids for the airport work. And all three came in over the engineering estimate. And so Erin, correct me if I'm not getting this correct because it threw me off that there's no dollar amounts in the other bids. And the bid that came in closest would have us paying, rather than $12,000, we'd be paying closer to $13,877. And so because we just got this information today and the exact figures came in tonight, I think maybe unless time is of the essence, if we could put this on the work session that I'd like to have so we can talk about it and look at the three bids that came in. There is a recommendation as to taking the lower one. But there's also a suggestion that we could limit the work and do less than the full project. And I think that's a bigger discussion for all of us. Is there anyone that feels like deferring our selection until next week in time for, so that we have time to talk about it? Would be a bad thing.
Mayor, my, your audio is not great with me tonight. And so we have three bids and they're about $1,000 over, 1,200 more than we anticipated. Is that what?
No, they're substantially more. It would require us to pick, the, UDOT will pick up a big chunk of that. But we would be paying, rather than the the estimated amount of about $12,500, we'd pay $13,877. So the choice we have is to go with accepting the full bid from one of the three or cutting the work back. And since I just got this information literally an hour ago, I haven't been able to even read it and disseminate it to everybody.
Work session sounds good. We'll talk about it, sounds like.
What, what did, did you have any contact with JAviation on their opinion? Because I know they wanted to get it done while it was still cold.
Right. JAviation is recommending, they do have a recommendation, of course. Looking for the name of the company.
It's Maxwell, Maxwell Asphalt. Maxwell Asphalt, Inc.
Do you have that right in front of you, Erin?
Yeah, the total bid amount for Maxwell was $102,325. And that is over the initial estimate. So the initial estimate was approximately $88,000. So that's the difference that the state would be increasing their portion. And then we would be increasing ours to $13,877 to do the entire project.
Well, it seems to me like that's an additional $1,300. But it seems to me like we ought to move forward and approve that as long as JAviation is happy with that particular company. Seems like we could. I would, I would think we ought to move ahead with that one, if that's their recommendation.
I feel like for $1,200 or $1,300 difference, Lou, I agree with Lou and, you know, if we could go ahead and get it done, if that's appropriate, then I'm, you know, I'm willing to vote for that.
So the concern that I'd had was if we went with, I agree with both of you. If we went with splitting the bid and doing the smaller amount or doing one part of it now and one part of it later, the bid is going to be too small. The work is going to be too small for us to be sure that somebody else is going to come in and finish it in six months or a year. So.
And we should do the whole thing.
Yeah, and I'm certainly fine with having one of you make that motion. I just didn't want to preempt it by saying, you know, let's vote on it, so.
I'd like to make that motion. We go ahead and engage these guys and pay that extra $1,300 and get us knocked off by the cold weather is suitable for asphalt for airports.
And so that, that would be Maxwell, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I would say it's JAviation's suggestion. It's that they're the engineers that have to work with the bidder. And if they're happy with this lowest bid, then I'm happy with their recommendation. So I would second that.
Good.
Any further discussion? Then all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, four ayes. Then we'll figure out the next step of letting them know and getting that work organized.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, yeah, appreciate it. Thanks.
Well, that, that's how I felt, but I, you know, want to make sure everybody's had an opportunity to, to read what I got that I couldn't send out until later tonight, so. All right, number three, recommendation of Malia Collins as the Bluff Community Center Manager and a discussion as to the next step. I think that Malia is on the meeting. I did ask her to join us if she could. Hi, Malia. So having looked at the one qualified resume that came in on time and then we had one that came in after the date and time. And then we had an inquiry, but not a, not anything further than a excited, I'd love to be there email. So I've met with Malia and Erin and we've kind of gone over the duties which were laid out in the Community Center long ad. And Malia's been doing the job now three or four months. And so what I wanted to do before we get into a discussion of extending the offer in terms of what the salary is or the hourly is, is give everybody an opportunity to ask her any questions. So does any of the council have a question for Malia at all?
I don't have a question, but I do appreciate you applying and I appreciate the work that you've done. And, and I realize it's got to be a little bit hard being part, part-time here, part-time in and out, but it seems like, you know, we really appreciate the help.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Mayor, it seems we need to move forward with.
Yes.
And I'm, I'm all for that with the motions appropriate or however you want to handle it.
So let me just tell you kind of the perimeters right now is that Malia estimates that it's about 20 hours a month that she's doing and we're paying her $30 an hour right now. If we had, okay, and so we're not in the season yet. I also, I want to be really straightforward that I've had this conversation with Malia and with Erin, is that I anticipate if we get the CDBG grant and we were to get the fire suppression money together and we move forward on pushing this million-dollar request with the federal government, this is, there are some things that are going to have to move around internally for all of us to be able to function and particularly our manager. So I've talked with Malia about how she would feel if we asked her to increase hours or if just by virtue of the season hours increase. So what I'd like to propose is that we consider paying the $30 an hour for a 20-hour-a-month job function and review it in the next month or two as we go to see what picks up, what grants come in, what kind of other things might need to shift around to somebody. So that's my thinking. Everybody else?
Is that a motion, Mayor?
No, it's just
Just.
Kind of what, I want to update you so you know what I've talked about and what Malia has, has told us. Lou.
So we had a discussion, I, I believe without you, Malia, but whether it should be a salary job or a, an hourly job, I thought the salary was a better option because then you can be relaxed and stay as long as you want with people that are there or, you know, come and go as you need. And then if it was a lot of people renting it, then give you a percentage or something like that. But that's not what we decided. We decided to do an hourly. So I don't know, do we need to talk in a work session again? And if we've changed our mind and I'm doing a salary? Because it, it seems like we ought to just stick with what we decided and just pick the amount was where we were. We were pick somewhere we said between 25 and 30. The 30 means we're going to have to up some other salaries, I think. But, but I, you know, I do appreciate the time and, and where you're not. I don't know, that's, that was my question, I guess, in my background.
Brent, did you have a question?
Um, no, I had a comment. With just, with just a couple of months of looking at this, Lou, I like the mayor's idea of, of doing this thing. Go ahead and get started and see where we are. So I'm going to disagree with you on that. And I'll make a motion to versus do that at $30 an hour for these first couple of months and then look at it.
I second it.
And are you fine with that, Malia, for just going salary? Or does this, are you allowing for overtime or more hours? That was our discussion at our last work session when we discussed this and.
We're going to do hourly now and we can talk about salary later. So really, that's a, that, that bear right now.
Okay, so I had understood that we wanted to guarantee a certain amount and.
Hourly is kind of what my motion, yeah, I was, I was doing hourly.
But hourly, okay. I, I would second the hourly motion. That 30. Linda?
So I originally, I was the way to go, but now my thought is that doing it a salary per month is the way to go. They're, they're both, I mean, they're both doable. The, to me, the salary per month is easier. But maybe Malia has a preference.
So let, let's break it down. Is there anyone opposed on the council to the $30 an hour? So the question is then, do we say that it's hourly based on 20 hours a month and then keep reviewing it for a couple of months? Or do we say that it's a $600 a month salary with the idea that it's about 20 hours of work?
My motion is to pay that hourly and assume it's going to be about 20 and look at it in a couple of months, 20 hours a month. I'm not, really, that's kind of where I am. And I think we had a second, Lou seconded it.
I did.
Well, I just want to be sure we're clear.
Well, I just, I, the, the hourly sort of protects Malia and protects the town. I mean, you know, we had this discussion of the salary. But in this situation, if she's doing hourly and there is more work, I mean, she's shown us over these last few months that she gets the job done, is there and being responsible for the, the place and so on. So I think that hourly gives her the option that if it was what I was trying to do with the bonus, if there were a lot of people reserving. But this way she just gets the extra hours if there's more activity.
Any further discussion? Then all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Well, welcome, Malia.
Thanks, everybody.
And Linda, you've already done all that, the paperwork before when we took Malia on, like for the tax verification and all that stuff.
Right, she's all set up and since she's still out, if she changed, if we do change her to salary at some point, then I just change the part of the accounting system. So she is in the system and, and we don't need any changes.
And that, that was one of the things that, that we kind of tossed back and forth was you having to keep track of your hours and having to report the hours. But that helps us track it more too, was what they all convinced me of. So I think it's still a good, a good thing.
Welcome, Malia, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right.
Then moving to number four, update on status of the Bureau of Land Management, the School Institutional Trust lands, land exchange within the Town of Bluff. So based on Representative Lyman's recommendation, they plunked in those three parcels. And at some point, those three parcels in our incorporated boundaries will be approved in an MOU between the governor and I believe it's the Department of Interior then, well, the governor, the legislators have already approved it. So what happens then ultimately is it goes to the federal government and Mike Lee and John Curtis will present a bill, will present bills to approve this land exchange. I've been doing a fair amount of discussion with Grand Canyon Trust and some other experts. It seems that there are a couple of routes that we can talk about in the future, but the bottom line is the update as it's going through. And it could be done today, it could be done in four months, we don't know. The bigger piece, or the other piece that I wanted to be sure we all knew was that John Curtis's aide gave me information about 10 days ago, saying that those parcels were pulled out, that they were not going through because Sitla didn't want them. Because they had too much archaeology, there was nothing that you could really develop. At 11:50 that night, I got an emergency message from the aide saying that she did not convey the information correctly and they were still in the land exchange. So that's where that sits. And we don't know when the MOU will go out for signature or when the bills will be presented. And according to Grand Canyon Trust, the likelihood of seeing the MOU or seeing the everything before gets kind of to the final stages are probably pretty slim. So that's that, any questions about it?
So there's nothing, if you go to the legislature, there's nothing that they've presented so far, like a map showing what they've put forth?
Oh, yeah, there, there's a map and that all came out with the one communication from, I don't know, can't remember if it was BLM or Sitla, but, and, or John Curtis, but we, we sent it out. There's a map that shows the parcels.
But I mean, I, I'd like to see the whole trade.
The whole trade. I'm assuming there's a, I'm assuming there's a, a website that you can go to right offhand, Lou, I don't have it.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I was just wondering how, you know, what else up outside of our borders and whatnot was getting traded, but.
I understand something up by recapture was getting traded out. And the piece happened to belong to one of the commissioners who has grazing rights up there, but that's the only other piece I know of.
Okay, all right, well, we'll wait and see.
Yeah, if you want, I can track that down pretty easily. I've got the information.
Could be BLM being the other partner in this was not able to stop this or ended up being, going along with this, Mayor, is that what you're telling me?
Neither Sitla nor BLM were willing to take it out, right. My understanding is that the, because they thought they would get this trade out done last legislative session and it didn't happen, that there was a big push on both sides to get this done now and not have it. get this done now and not have it go into another legislative year. So.
Let me ask you one more question. After this trade is done, if it comes off as we feel, is there an opportunity to solicit a, to retrade again, to just say, well, this didn't work out, it's not right? And, and so anyway, I'll be talking about that later.
Okay, yeah, and I don't know the answers to that question. It was, I will just say that I was so ecstatic to get the email saying it was off the table and at 11:55 PM, it was not a good next 12 hours. And I, because I knew how everybody would feel about this. And I think there've probably been some repercussions about the misinformation. All right, moving to number five.
We have some issues with SITLA that I'd like to reexamine, so we'll talk about that again, too.
Okay, that sounds good, Brandt. Number five, A, Bluff's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, I think that was March 1st. Lou?
Yes, yeah, so March 1st, we went to that, Erin was there also. They did receive the invitation from, for the government officials and the organizations to come to the Bike Utah workshop, March 20th, 24th, sorry, Friday, the 24th for that group. They decided that Malia could, could, she actually volunteered to go and Amanda is most likely going to be in person. So that was good. And then Erin, at the meeting, said that she hoped that this would all be posted, both sessions as a work session, so that anybody from the council and anybody from Planning and Zoning can go without feeling like it's a quorum and we can't be there. So it's definitely a workshop from Bike Utah and then the Active Transportation Committee. So they discussed that just a second. They had a letter, speaking of this land exchange, they had a letter or a request from the mayor to write another letter from Planning and Zoning backing up the other, the one that we sent out as a town. And they were going to do that. It was not prepared at the, the meeting, but they were going to send that. They want to do some more research, a couple of them signed up to do some research on other towns, on what they've done with RV ordinances for smaller towns like ours and like where you can park them, how many you can put on your lot, you know, all of those sorts of issues. And let's see, they want to update the, the land use clearance form to match the ordinance, they just kind of want to tweak that a little bit. So that's just some housekeeping, really. Then they're also discussing renewable energy and they want to bring it to the town council to see if it's a goal for Planning and Zoning to zone an area for renewable energy. So pretty much talking solar here, we don't get enough wind, but the solar is in demand and whatnot. So that, they want to bring the town council to see if that's something that should be their goal. And that's it on Planning and zoning, I believe. Yep. Erin, did you have anything? Okay.
All right, let's move then to B, Active Transportation Advisory Committee meeting, and that would be you again, Luanne.
Okay.
And then, but there's a request by the committee to hold virtual meeting using the AV system and to pay presenters.
Right, so we're kind of breaking ground here for committees in general on some of these things. And so for that workshop, the 23rd of the school, so that one's not any issue, but the 24th is the government officials from noon to 2:00, and then from 4:00 to 6:00 are, is when the residents can all come in and are trying to get information and opinions from as many people as possible. So we wanted to do a virtual hybrid meeting that like we've done where you've got the screen of the people there and they can see the, the meeting going on, and then we'd have somebody work with that person, with that group. One person would break out to that if there were breakout sessions. So what we are asking is to be able to hire our techie guy and have him come in and run it as a hybrid meeting. This, this status hasn't been provided to a committee yet, and so whether it's a case by case or if it's committees do have access to that equipment when we're trying to, to reach out to the community, that's kind of where we're at. We need to make sure that it's okay. We, what we need him for on Friday is six hours, have asked if he's available and he is. It needs to be somebody like him. He also wanted to participate in the workshops, but he can get things set up and, and still, still add his two bits. So that, and then we also have, like, we had a presenter that came up from Crown Point and was very inspirational, I mean, amazingly so. And he just volunteered his time to meet up with our committee, Bike Utah was on. It was just, he was amazingly great. I think he ought to come and do it for the whole town, because he just is, what they've done down there is, is super. But we had wanted to pay him a $50 stipend, and so it's a matter of how do we get that approval in order to do that? So those were the two questions.
So, okay, go ahead, Brandt.
Go ahead, Mayor, I, I just got a couple of questions. Go ahead and do yours first, if you'd like.
So because what we do for one committee, we should do for all, at least that's how I feel. And I feel if we pay one presenter, we should pay for all. I think that this was one of the reasons I decided that I'd ask about doing a work session on Thursday. We've got four or five things that we should hammer out. And I, I'll go to the other reason on the, on the work session, but I was thinking if we could do it Thursday, that would be really helpful and we could then get this on the next meeting for a vote. But I think this is a broader discussion because it totally changes what, what we're doing. And I think we need to look at, do you do it selectively? Do you do it for everyone? Do you do it for no one? So.
We could have sort of a priority that would allow a committee to access those services of, you know, like, maybe there's two statuses or something, but we'll talk about it. I agree that you don't want a, a cannon worm she can't close. But I, I do think that we need it for this event, so I'm going to work to try to get this done.
Yeah, and like for this particular event, even if we approve it now and then, you know, do a policy for going forward, for, you know, it's such a small cost in order to get input from a wide range, residents who want to log on like we do here and comment, and also the government officials and different organizations that might not be able to spare somebody to come. And it would be then on YouTube, so that's, that's the advantages that.
And that, that's why I think we need to have a work session. I think there's several other things we need to consider and talk about. So can, can everybody do a work session this Thursday at either 8:30 or 9:00?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I can, too.
I can.
Thursday, the 9th?
Right, thanks, Lou, yeah, the 9th.
Yeah, I should be able to do that.
Okay, good. Then we'll get that scheduled. Moving to C, the Cooperative Cultural Center's Design Review Committee meeting today, I'm going to ask that Erin kind of skirt through that and then with the update on the federal grant applications.
So with Jim out of the country and a pretty severe time difference, I went ahead and sent out the invite for the DRC meeting today. And what I asked the committee to look at was a pretty detailed timeline that I had put together in order to accomplish submitting this grant through the EPA for a million dollars to help us with the renovation costs for the CCC building. So it's a pretty major undertaking and we need, we need UDB's partnership in order to do it. So the town would be the applicant, but the grant application essentially is for a partnership between a municipality and a community-based nonprofit organization. So this grant really was written for us, which is exciting, but there's a lot we need to do in six weeks in order to meet that timeline, excuse me, in order to meet that deadline. So I put together the timeline, we had some specific asks. The takeaway is Ann and myself are going to meet with some folks from UDB on Tuesday and Brandt, that would probably be a good thing for you to stop by, too. So we're getting into the phase of really talking about the use of space because we need to have that roadmap, we need to have that physical map, I guess, as to how we're utilizing the space to put together a well-thought-out grant. We also briefly talked about fire suppression, the fire suppression system, we didn't get too far into that, there were some comments back and forth as to, you know, when that would go out to bid. We want to express to, you know, we want to express that it, we are unable to place it out to bid until we have at least $200,000 and we do not have that right now. So it's not responsible for us to place it out for a sealed bid until we have enough funding to cover most of it. So I've put together a draft of a bid packet and that has been sent to the DRC members to review and we'll talk about that during the next week. So some really good progress and it's great to have some pen to paper, but certainly the DRC and these respective, you know, between the town and UDB have a lot to work on over the next six weeks in order to accomplish that pretty big, pretty big grant ask. And the great news is it doesn't require any matching funds, which is phenomenal.
So it was Erin, myself, Woody Lee, Dave Conine, Damian Ballerun. And Erin did a great job of pulling together a timeline that we could all in theory commit to. So Monday, Dave and Damian will be down in Bluff, they're going to have a UDB meeting in the morning at, in Heather Atean's office at the modular. Then they'll do their own walk around and look at the, at the CCC. Tuesday, we'll meet and try to hammer out, you know, what projects can go into this grant, because we have to have specificity as to which spaces we're using. We had an offer from Jared Barrett to help us do a walkthrough with, from the construction view about a good use of space, and so I'm going to reach out to him to see if he can join us for an hour or two on Tuesday. The, this ties into the fire suppression grant. I'm hoping this week we'll hear something from the USDA, that was a request for $50,000. And Linda has an update on the Zion account whenever she feels it's ready to do, but if, right now, the big picture is we have $79,000 some odd dollars, we are a long way from $200,000. And UDB today, when asked specifically by me, what was the dollar amount they're putting in, they don't have a dollar amount they would state today. So again, that's going to be Monday, that's going to be my big push Monday and Tuesday is we need to know what your, your funding ability is on this. And then, of course, doing all the work that goes with the grant. We're aiming to have this done somewhere about a week before the deadline because the systems will get jammed up.
Amazing work, ladies.
Any questions, comments? Linda, do you want to give an update now?
Sure. So Brandt and I went up and to start the setup of the, it's called the CCC Acquisition and Development Account that will be used for the grants that come in and it'll be the way that we pay people that, that are doing the work. And so we actually, okay, so we need tonight to, we, we've done this before, but we need to do this this evening. We need to authorize Ann to be the signatory of, for the techie account. And then, once we get Woody Lee or whoever is going to be the signatory on the Dina Baca's side, then we'll have to do this, she'll have to redo hers. And so each entity will have a signatory, but to, tonight, we have to authorize Ann. We've already done that, you know, we've already voted. Zion's just wants it to be totally current and.
There's some paperwork coming, we talked to them about it, and I'm going to make that motion, Linda, now, to have Ann be our signatory on that construction account with a second signatory as designated by UDB coming later.
So I think if, if we don't have it on the agenda, we shouldn't vote. I think we should go back to what we've already voted to say that we've already approved this account and, and put it on Tuesday to approve Ann, because there's, nothing needs to happen between now and next Tuesday.
Well, it was a banking timing thing, Lou, like, officer's coming down tomorrow and like, I don't feel like that it not being on the agenda would make me not want to vote on it. So I'm, I'm going to, on the floor.
So, so basically, we're just, we're authorizing, or actually, I think this can be a consensus because we, we turned in paperwork showing that we had already voted for it, we had done authorization or a resolution, I don't remember which, we turned in our minutes for that meeting and in addition, our EIN number. So I, so, so we have everything in that we, that we need, we just need kind of a.
Linda and I spent about 30 minutes there filling out paperwork and she asked us to kind of do this tonight, and I told her we would, so that's kind of, it just kind of came up.
I think that the consensus is, I'm definitely in agreement, we need to have the account moving forward, so, but I'm just a little uncomfortable doing a full-on vote, but we, we did before, I know we did before. And if you're just, you're in the process now of the administrative setting it up, and so that's fine. I think that having Ann be the signatory on our side is perfect.
And we've already, I mean, we can call it an affirmation without calling it a vote. We're, we're just affirming what we've already done. We've already, we approved me, we approved the account. They just want something in writing that says we haven't changed it, basically. So if we're all in agreement that I'm still it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You're definitely it, Mayor.
Yeah, well, yeah.
So.
All right.
So, oh, go ahead. So they want us to scan it to them this evening, so I will bring it around for people to sign. And at this point, I'll, I'm sure I'll say this at a future meeting, too, it's really important that when we talk about how much money we actually have, it's $79,450. So is someday, you know, I'm going to have to talk to the auditor and explain all the little details and if we have, you know, different numbers, it becomes very confusing. So anyway, so I will get that signed tonight.
Does it need to be signed by everybody? Is that what they wanted? Is the council signatures on letterhead, letter or something, or do they just need a confirmation from the mayor?
Actually, you just reminded me, they wanted a letterhead. I had forgotten that part. They want, I explained that one of our members isn't here and they said having the majority sign it is fine.
Okay, all righty.
Do you need, do you have letterhead or do you need help with doing that?
I, I have the logo, so.
Okay. All right, well, now we've got an account and it's set up, so I have a $100 cash donation that's been sitting, so I'll get that up to Zion then as well. Moving to D, Bluff's Solar Eclipse Planning Committee meeting on March 1st, 2023. And Erin, can you update on that?
Yeah, so this past meeting, we kind of did a roundtable discussion of where folks are, kind of a general, general meeting discussing some of the communication needs that we've identified. Our upcoming meetings, March 15th, we're going to get a full update from the Communications Subcommittee on April 5th, our Human Needs Subcommittee. Our Human Needs Subcommittee is going to present. And then on April 19th, the Traffic and Parking Subcommittee is going to present. Um I believe that our committee is moving ahead at a very good pace. Um I'm glad that it, you know, we just, we've been looking at it. Um when, when we're looking at it, uh we do have a member of the BLM who, uh excuse me, an employee of the BLM who is, who has been on the last two meetings and we are continuing to see good partnership there, which I think is really important. Um and, you know, overall, I really appreciate all the time and effort that's going into it from, from each of the members. Uh they, they have their focus areas and things are good unless folks have any questions.
No, thanks, Erin. That's good. Um E is San Juan County Solar Eclipse Planning Committee. There's a typo here. It was not February or March 27th, it was February 27th, although I felt like by that day on the 27th that I'd been doing a month's worth of work. There were quite a few people on the San Juan County meeting. Um, looks like there are probably 20 people. There was a, uh some discussion about the traffic flow with the BLM, Jeremy Martin. He talked about the dispersed camping that they're, they're trying to push. They're out in Valley of the Gods right now, kind of closing off certain self-made camp spots so that they can have the designated camp spots that are out there, the ones that people have been using and not create new ones. They're discussing having Valley of the Gods be a one-way road. Mulkey dugway is a harder one, um that's kind of being struggled with, like, what do you do about Mulkey dugway? What do you do with the RVs that think they're going to go up and the RV that thinks it's going to come down? The, there's a discussion about the Goose necks. The Goose necks are being managed as well. They're trying to get a, a sense as to how many people logically could be at the Goose neck safely. Uh and that again is another traffic flow piece. We talked about the new UDOT sign up at Sand Island. If you haven't seen it, it tells people there's stopped traffic, so UDOT is monitoring that. And overall, um the county's doing their meeting once a month at the end of the month, so the end of uh March will be the next meeting. I think the push more from the, from the county view is still to kind of promote the event versus um safely promote the event versus like Bluff not trying to have more of an event, but trying to get everybody in and out of here safely. So that was a, a good meeting. Any questions or thoughts?
Goose necks is an excellent place for RVs. I worked out there for some of the summers I was here. I just drove it the other day. It was a large expanse of flat, albeit a little bumpy, but you could really state some RVs there, so I'll just clear that out.
Yeah, well, hopefully the BLM will be figuring out what, what they want to do. Um I think Chris Hansen's been tasked with that, although it might be several things he's been tasked with.
Isn't it state, it's a state park?
Yeah, but Chris Hansen is with the state, right? Yeah, so, yeah. So I think that he's been the one who's been tasked with finding the numbers of possible people that can be out there. Um and I, I still think that there's an underestimation as to the slam we're going to get, but I'm hoping I'm wrong.
And they are planning to host an event at Goose necks, too. So there, there will be an educational event hosted there, so that in and of itself will, will bring some more people to that corner.
I think you'll be fooled. The question is, how will they, you know, how many spaces will, will, you know, because you can drive all the way back around toward, toward Mexican Hat. I mean, it's a long way around there, so I'll, I won't belabor the point.
There, there's also a, a piece that came to my attention that a fairly reliable rumor, I'll call it a rumor, is that there, there's going to be a event at Mexican Hat Rock with a DJ. And so I shoved that off of the town's responsibility because that's not on our boundary and I pushed it to the BLM and the BLM enforcement's aware of it. Whether that's accurate or not, but um I didn't want us holding the bag on that information, so it's gone. F, the Road Committee meeting on March 2nd, 2023. Lou, do you want to talk about that or Michael? I think Michael's on.
Yeah, hi.
Hi, Michael.
Uh, you want me to go through it?
Sure.
Okay, so we met uh last Wednesday and uh we discussed traffic control with a recommendation. Uh it's going to come up at the uh work session this Thursday, I believe. Uh we talked about establishing a uh town council to consider establishing a speed limit for the town. We looked at uh, we're checking out speed bumps, applicable, applied uh speed bumps and uh we, we're researching that right now. Um road maintenance, um that's a, you know, talked about things coming up this spring, road patching, shoulder work. Talk about grading the road down at Sand Island, the one that runs parallel with the river, which turns out to be our responsibility. So um I got to check with BLM on that. We talked about infrastructure improvements, discussed the possibility of proving uh, uh improving uh Second Street East and uh Black Locus between Third and Second Street, looking at that work, uh doing some work there this uh springtime. Uh we talked about engineers, uh which will be coming up at the work session. Right now, in the Roads Fund, there's 71,450. Liabilities to the Roads Fund is 32,000 approximately because we don't have all the invoices from the county, so it's, it's an allowance in some cases. The, the remaining disbursements for 2023 fiscal year uh is tw- from UDOT is $24,000 approximately. That's a conservative number. There's 17,500 left in the matching grant from the San Juan County Transportation Board. There was a meeting last night that I attended. No really new business came up, but the, you know, they had, they have money from the, from the wells that are in the county. And then we discussed um uh a department structure for the Roads Department, you know, which would make, would make it more formal. And that is, I believe, coming up at the work session on Thursday. And then the discussion of discretionary fund. And uh I think that was about it. Somebody, Luann, anybody want to add anything to that?
Um, yeah, a, a couple of things on that structure, just so you all can think about it before the work session. Uh what we're trying to figure out is, is it the first department and then the other, like the Water Department would follow as a department? Or is it a committee? You know, trying to figure out that aspect. Um we did do a resolution, number 52, that put Michael as a manager, but it's just a question of what is he a manager of? And whether or not it, we need bylaws as a department or bylaws as a committee and just kind of bringing that up to the current stuff. He also needs an email. Um we need a roads email so that he's not talking to engineers and whatnot from his personal email account. Um and then on the, uh, the idea, we also talked about different, the infrastructure. One of them was bringing up the old highway, which is, the old highway is the one that turns off at Fourth and wraps around all the way out to the other side by uh Twin Rocks. And, and whether we want to go after, you know, funding for that, there's also a lot of roads money available, whether that's something that we want to pave and whatnot. And I, and I was going to bring it to the livability strategic planning group because it was, Michael mentioned it and then it didn't really end up on anybody's radar for making things more livable in Bluff. So I will take that to the livability group next week, but that's uh was the other one. And then I, um, yeah, let's see. Yeah, and then I was just going to mention that the Black Locus between Second and Third, uh the property owners there improved the town road on their own. They put gravel down through quite a stretch of it and then didn't do, they didn't, they didn't improve the whole road, they just improved the part that kind of came by them. So that, that's, and then it gets really bumpy, really muddy and there is, I think that goes on through that, so. Um but that, yeah, but thanks, Michael.
Erin? That stretch on Black Locus, East Black Locus between Second and Third, is that confirmed that it is a town Class C road?
Yes, it is.
It's on our, it is on our.
No, it never, it fell through the, as uh, as I was told by uh Sam Cantrell, the surveyor, it, uh Second Street East and uh Second Street West, Sec- and Black Locus between Second and Third, they're sea roads, they got, uh, but they, they fell through the cracks, they didn't get on the manifest. So the next time the town revises its map and its manifest, it'll put those streets among, you know, others that may be considered uh as part of the official manifest. But it's a 90, it's a 99-foot right-of-way, Black Locus. Second Street East is a 99-foot right-of-way. And uh, uh Second Street West, southwest below the highway, south of the highway, is 80 feet right-of-way. So even though there's trees, you know, I, I look at Black Locus between Second and Third as like a lane rather than a, than a, right now, because, you know, there's trees growing in the right-of-way, I believe, and shrubbery, so uh, but it is a sea road.
Since it's not on the manifest, are we receiving funding for it or no?
No.
Okay, so none of those right now. Um maybe that's something that, that uh we can talk about in terms of how and when to update the manifest to ensure those are all, all on the books.
Yeah, uh, you know, uh one thing about UDOT, it's a, it's a large bureaucracy right now, uh, you know, to, to, you have to be careful when you revise something to make sure that, that you don't create waves, right? So to speak. So.
Thank you. Great job.
Yeah, thank you. Uh and uh I hope to be back, uh, I plan to be back around Easter, you know, right now. I'm uh going through the medical stuff.
Get her done and get on back, Michael. Thanks for all the hard work.
Uh, you're welcome. Thank you.
All right, um I will, Michael mentioned that the roads pieces are on the work session. So I will add this question about the Class C road for Second East or whatever we're talking about for that, for the discussion in the work session. Moving to the Playground Committee update, uh Jocelyn Meyer left several messages for me last, this last week. I have not, an apologies, Jocelyn, if you're on here. I have not had the time to contact her. So I will get that on the next agenda. My understanding is that there may not be the grants that I was told that were available for playgrounds. So stay tuned on that. H is the San Juan County Housing Sustainability Meeting and St. Christopher Mission's Housing Feasibility Study. I went to the Housing Feasibility Meeting, which was um interesting, talking about what we can do as a county versus local. And Elaine Gisler set a meeting for March, I might have to say March 10th, but I don't think I have the date here. Erin, is it March 10th that we're going?
March 10th from 1 to 4.
And it's up in Monticello. Uh the folks that received invitations were what were considered leaders within their communities, so the, the mayors, managers, um the unincorporated areas where there's a, a spokesperson. And we've been invited to have a discussion about not whether we are joining in a countywide study, but whether our, our community would be open to considering doing it so that Elaine can get a sense as to how many communities are interested to, in doing a countywide study and then talking about what the resources might look like for that. Father Joe Hubbard was on that initial Sustainability Committee uh at, but he was not in the last couple of meetings. And right after that, literally within a day, um he contacted me to say that he had hired Bob Springmeier of Bonneville Research to do a Bluff housing study. And when I asked him for clarification, it appears that what he's done is hired Bob Springmeier's firm to do a housing study for the two phases of the tiny houses at, at St. Christopher's and then a possible larger apartment type building out there. And I followed up with that with, by giving Bob Springmeier a call and that's what he said. My concern was the obvious, which is now we're doing what was talked about initially a year ago, not having 12 different studies, having one big study that incorporated all the different areas to save a little bit of money and get some continuity. But um I think that St. Christopher's now is on their own with, with what they're doing. Any questions? All right, number six, update on the EPA grant. Jim asked me to put this on and then realized that we'd be covering it in the DRC, but also this would be like, I don't know if this was nine in the evening or one in the morning for him, so he declined to, he has to be excused for this meeting. Number seven, the update on San Juan County Wayfinding Sign Meeting from uh February 27th, 2023. If everybody remembers, a firm was hired to put up wayfinding signs throughout the county and uh then there was a holdup, even though UDOT was a major player in this. UDOT jumped in midstream and said, well, whoops, we can't do this for what you're asking. And their planner, a planning firm had already been hired and was working on it. They've straightened that out there now. There's a map of where each community or each segment of uh of UDOT's highway and the right-of-ways will have signage, either directional signage or information signage. It's not to focus on any particular business, so they're not business signage. Bluff has, I think there are like four or five signs that are going to, uh, that are being considered. And so if, trying to think. I didn't, I don't think I sent it out because when I got the packet, it did not include Bluff. It was like 135 signs. Numbers 121 to 125 were for Bluff and there were no numbers for us and nothing on the map. So I didn't know until they fixed the map. And if I didn't send it out, somebody let me know that you didn't receive it and I'll get it, get it out to you so you can see. But I think there are four or five signs in the whole incorporated area. Any, yes?
If it's 125 signs and there's 125 miles worth of highway north-south, you know, 100 miles to Moab and 50 miles to Monument Valley, that sounds like a sign per mile and that concerns me.
So, Brad, why don't you and I talk about this? I, I need to look at my notes to see if there's another uh follow-up meeting or if they just want the written comment. So can you remind me to, to talk to you about that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I will do that. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just, I don't, you know, I, I'll, I'll look and see. It looks like we've got the draft one that was two, from February 27th, so we, we must have gotten it from you.
And I hope I sent out the one that they corrected, um where they actually put the signs on the roadmap and told us what they were signing. All right, then moving to number eight. Then moving to number eight, this will go on next week's agenda. I need, uh, I got a request from Sunrise Engineering asking for some data and we don't hold that data. BWW Bluff Water Works holds the data, so I sent it, the request to Marx Powell to help me understand what we needed and what they could answer. And I haven't heard back from Marx. There's a BWW meeting tomorrow night for anyone who would like to attend, 7:00 PM at the library. I will be going unless something drastic happens, and I'm hoping that Marx will update me at that time. And, and I just got it off to Marx. I want to say Saturday or Sunday. So he hasn't had the, the information very long. Any questions, thoughts? Okay, if anybody has a question on BWW tomorrow night, 7:00 PM. Number nine, update on strategic planning. Erin, do you want to take that since you've been doing the leading on this?
Sure. So I can't remember the last time I updated this group. I feel like I've had a lot of questions about strategic planning, um, but we have, um, individual initiative teams for each of the areas of livability, mindful growth, and sustainable local government. Each of those are meeting roughly weekly. Um, I am chair, co-chairing with Ann, the Sustainable Local Government, and I am chairing mindful growth, and Dan Myers is chairing livability. Um, so each of us kind of have a different process as to how we are, um, putting together the information for the deliverables that, uh, are due on April, so they're due on April 17th, and the full-day meeting is on April 27th, that's a Thursday. Um, but each of the teams are meeting and really analyzing the data which pathway associates provided, as well as the surveys. And so I just wanted to reiterate to the community that all of that input is being evaluated and put together, um, in this plan. And so, um, each of the, the committees are kind of in a different, different, um, uh, space right now in terms of, of what they're working on, but, uh, they are meeting weekly and it's a lot of work going into it. And I know everyone's very excited to present this out, um, on April 27th, which will be here before we know it. I know it seems like a far, long ways away, but based on all the asks, it is not far away.
Thanks, Erin. Yes. I love how all the deadlines are going to fall between the middle of March and the middle of April till we get to the budget. Um, number 10, well, any questions for Erin about what's going on? Thanks, Erin. You're really doing a great job of pushing through on this. Number 10, the report on the insurance claim status for the water damage at this community center. So at this point, what we need to be able to find is someone to take out carpet and put carpet in and put the, well, I keep drawing a blank on what those called, the, the wall things that at the bottom between the carpet and the wall, you know, the, the, yeah. So Erin and I talked about it and we decided that there was no point in tearing up the carpet here in the, in our offices, laying it down and repairing those areas if we're going to tear it up for CDBG. So rather than, again, piecemealing and trying to get someone into the senior center and someone into here and then someone tearing it up and starting over, um, we just kind of made a administrative decision to sit until we look at the CDBG, see who had a viable bid, make the offer, and then be able to, um, focus on the senior center and get somebody lined up to do the senior center. Obviously with the CDBG piece now kind of hanging, Chad, um, that's still the plan. We need to really coordinate these two projects so that we're not spending money we don't need to spend and creating work. So stay tuned on that. I need to update the senior center, but, um, yeah, there's a few wrinkles now. Any questions or thoughts? And if.
Excellent work. Thank you.
Thanks, Brandt. Uh, under new business, the Community Impact Board, to get an application in, you need to go to the tutorial meeting on March 6, 2023. I think at least two of us went. I went, Erin attended, and I don't know if Linda attended or not. No. So, you know, I think the big takeaway for me was, again, CIB is a little more user-friendly, friendly in process and CDBG, but it's met with the same trepidation on my side of like, oh my gosh. And in order for us to put in, to amend our project list, which we do have, we need to do it, I think it was the end of May, and that would be for 2024 CIB projects. And so that's something we should talk about. Do we want to amend that list? We also have to do a capital assets inventory, which we have done. This year it was mandatory, so if we hadn't done it, we have to do it. But I need to reach out to the, um, CIB and see what we submitted, because when they started doing this two years ago, three years ago, it was voluntary and Michael Bryant and Jade Powell helped most of us just throw something together. And when I say throw, I mean, it was really like get it in your hand and throw it at the wall and hope it's stuck kind of list, um, kind of inventory. So I'm sure that it needs to be updated and cleaned up. So I think that's a discussion we will need to have once I get that list and we look at it. Uh, any questions, thoughts? All right. If there's not, then we decided on Thursday at 8:30 for the, um, work session. And just quickly, I'll run through what I'm thinking. Uh, the road committee work, questions that came up. There's a request by Bears Years Partnership to use the, uh, community center for dark sky that might be for the eclipse. We need to review and discuss the CDBG bid. We need to discuss signage for the community center and a phone system upgrade. Review and discuss the use of the AV equipment and operator streaming and request for payment to presenters. I may not get to number six, review and discuss a privacy notice. We need to have one on our documents when we collect data, but quite honestly, this has been up the bottom of my list this last couple of months. And number seven, handling questions from public as to what they need, when is it our job and when isn't it? And then I put, uh, on the roads thing, I added the Black Locust, whatever, so, Brandt.
Um, Mayor, I, if we're going to talk a little bit about signage for the community center, um, maybe we could talk about signage in general as that being part of a, maybe a unified, uh, concept. So if you amend that, I'd like to talk at it in a little larger terms than just the community center.
Okay. Sounds good. Anyone else?
I'm wondering what happened with the dark sky moving forward. Is that something we need to discuss? Make a committee or talk about committees or?
We could, I can add it to the work session and we can talk about it.
If we're ready to do that. I, I don't know if you've got a request for a bid out or I'd just kind of like to know where it's at, I guess, and see if we need, just as part of this livability session, we need to kind of know where we're headed as a town.
So we can put that on the work session and discuss it?
Okay.
Thanks. Uh, so the reason, there's, obviously, there's a lot of work to be done on these grants. And in looking at use of time, we really needed to have a, a work session. As you can tell, there are quite a few things we need. I would like to suggest then canceling the third meeting of the month, which is March 24th, 21st, because we have the active transportation meetings that week as well. Everybody's working on their piece for strategic planning. Erin, in particular, is really doing a, a big deep dive on the federal granting. We're going, I mean, there is a lot going on in March and I, and, and to be honest, I will be on a train.
So moved.
And so when I looked at it, rather than moving things and trying to cram another meeting in, my suggestion would be we vote and consider canceling the 21st and then moving into our April meeting schedule. Brandt?
I'll make a motion to cancel that meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Four ayes. I had a call with Lori Falk and she is, uh, Congressman Curtis's aide. He will be here on May 30th, 2023, and he'd like to have lunch with us. I taught, and have a meeting, and I talked with her several times because we were going back and forth on the Sitla BLM land exchange. Then I told her that the 30th is the day, I mean, she knew this, the 30th is the day after Memorial Day, and in my mind, that is just not the best date, but his schedule is very jammed. This is when he'll be here and this is when he can meet. So that was kind of in this downtime of meetings. Then I got a call from Larry Ellerson, who is his other aide, who's his land use aide, which I, of course, was all excited because I thought he was going to reverse the Sitla BLM information. But he was calling to say he's taking over some of the work here in Bluff that Lori was handling, and he wanted to talk about, um, the 30th. I told him I'd get back with him yesterday and I, I didn't, so I'm going to tomorrow, but, um, so what he'd like me to do is set up lunch, like we've done before, and those people who are available can go to lunch and talk to Congressman Curtis and those folks who aren't. So I need to talk with Twin Rocks and see if they're able to do something. I know that's a Tuesday, I don't know what their schedule will look like, but I believe right now that might be the only option for lunch, so. Is everybody okay with that? You don't have to commit to it today. I just move forward. Number 14, board reappointments. I've meant to do this a couple of weeks ago. Marx Powell and Amarch May were reappointed to the Bluff Water Works by San Juan County Commissioners. Lois Young, her term is up on the San Juan Public Health, she would like to serve another term. And, uh, Dr. Sonata just asked for a thumbs up or thumbs down on Lois. Can't imagine any of us would say no, but I do have to get back with him, so. Lois has been fabulous, and I say we go with Lois for the next term.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Lois to San Juan County Health Department.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, four ayes. Linda, financials.
Brandt, uh, checked the statement reconciliations, and we have, uh, last month, I did add sales tax to the PTIF. We have, so this month, we had almost $2,000 in interest. So thank you to Lou for showing that and everyone who worked on that. Um, and I believe that's all I have right now.
So before everybody jumps off, um, and I say other, we do have an executive session to discuss purchase exchange lease of real property or pending or possible litigation. It will be short, I promise you. Um, so number 16, does anyone have an out there?
No. Um, yes, there's a community garden meeting on Thursday at 6:00 PM out at the Bluff, at the Episcopal Mission, at the Bluff Community Garden, um, and they are going to be doing , uh, tree pruning. So it's, it's that little orchard and it looks like they're pruning and you can bring your own tools or you can go and they have a few to share, but they're going to do a tutorial and then trim up those at the Mission Garden. And it's just two days from now, so, uh, head on out there, 6:00 PM.
Okay. Thanks, Lou. Linda, did you have anything?
Yes. Um, actually, and I just put these posters up in the, in the post office. I believe the Thursday meeting is for the garden and the pruning meeting, I believe, is Saturday. So there's two meetings with USU, um, related to the garden, but the posters are up in the post office, so, um, that's what, uh, anyway, so you can check that out.
Do you know what time it is Saturday then for the tree pruning? I thought, I didn't see the Saturday go by on my email, but you don't remember the time?
I don't, I felt like it, I think 11-ish, but I, I could be wrong. I could be totally wrong.
Okay. Well, there's posters at the post office, so thank you.
And there was a town blast that went out, so.
Okay. Very good.
Good. All right. So because it is 7:26, I need a motion to go into an executive session with a motion to adjourn following the executive session so we don't come back here at all. Everybody's logged off.
So moved. We're moved to go to executive session and then, um, close the meeting after that session, Mayor.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right. Erin has sent out the invite on that. I'm going to turn off the recorder and log back in. Everybody should log back in. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.